I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, what is your pleasure for the consent of the chairman? I move that be accepted as presented. Secondly, any discussion? The added to the start currently, if you were. Okay. For the added Carly, added this. Uh huh. Anywhere? Okay. Good. Great people?
Yep.
On paper. Okay. The next select board meeting will be held here at the town hall on Thursday, April 18th. We should mention the amendments. And the select board meeting will be 5:30. The board of assessors will meet at, uh, remind you of the time?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday?
April 17th.
April 17th at?
From 9:00 AM.
9:00 to?
Four-ish.
Ish. And lunch will be served. For people who are caught here in the, in the line and, am I free to say, who is applying the standard? You certainly may. That's on Wednesday, lunch will be provided by the Wittinghead Store.
Good choice. Yeah.
I'm not sure. Okay. Have I covered all the upcoming meetings of the boards? I think so.
I think so.
All right. Those will be published. First business item, investment committee recommendation.
Yes.
Mr. Coos?
Yes, I'm Paul Coos. I'm representing the investment committee. We've got two issues tonight. The first issue is a reinvestment of funds issue. We had a maturity of a government note coming in February and we decided to leave it in the money market at that time because the money market was yielding 5.29%. And since then, two-year note rates, which are the maturity we're looking at, have come up about eight basis points. And so now we feel it's time to reinvest that money in, in the two-year notes. So we're recommending 150,000 of the four and five eights of 31526 and yielding about 4.95%.
Say that again so we can get the details into, into motion.
150,000 of the four and five eights of 31526 and it's about 4.95. That would still leave about 117,000 in the government money market fund and that's yielding still 5.2. So we're looking for your approval on that one.
Do we have a motion to?
I move that we accept the recommendations of the investment committee, take $150,000 and transfer that to an account that we yield 4.95%, meaning they were meaning $117,000 at a government money market fund yielding 5.2% over two years.
And I would make a friendly amendment that we authorize the town treasurer to make the financial transaction. Second. Any discussion? On paper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was one other issue we had that came up at the meeting. We know that it's been a difficult year for a lot of our citizens with the inflation rate up and wages probably lagging that. And in view of, in view of that circumstance and the fact that the long-term capital improvement fund is meant to serve the, the town, which means the people of the town. We felt that, in view of the circumstances, that we might want to forego this year's $50,000 injection into the fund. It just didn't seem to be a good look to take into savings $50,000 that could have been, that could go back on the tax rate in a beneficial way. So the fund right now has ample resources and it's making good interest and there weren't any large expenses on the horizon. So for one year, we feel that it's probably a good idea to, to not take that $50,000. So we discussed that and voted unanimously on it. I realize the only way to work this is to get a no vote at the town meeting, but I think we will recommend at the town meeting that it not pass this year so that the money stays with the town.
Select board comments?
I think it's a great idea. We've got some other areas that are projections. I think we need to find a way to help our town.
Right, we just didn't deal our political.
Where are we at? What is our?
The balance right now is about 665,000 and the run rate on the interest is about 30,000 a year.
And what was our goal or end goal for that?
Well, there's not an end, there's not an end goal, there's a maximum cap, which is 880,000.
That's what I was kind of, I knew there was a top set offer.
So it'll be about 100,000, uh, $700,000 by next year's town meeting, which is plenty to cover whatever the town needs.
Good idea. Very good idea.
Mr. Coos?
I just wanted to make, as a member of the, of the investment committee, just one additional comment. Then I've been observing the school board and their budget planning and so forth. And one of the things we've talked about in the past is that there's going to need to be a new roof on the elementary school. And the budget from the school board this year is going to say that that won't happen until next year. So that's another reason why this forgiving the 50,000 is not a traumatic thing this year. But that, that is the only capital project that we're aware of, is the investment committee. And it's a year away. So that's, that's part of the thinking that maybe Paul just said.
Live.
Is there? Is there, um, there will be a warrant article as we had last year for 50,000?
Unless you don't want to include it. I can't remember the wording of the article exactly, so I'm gonna have to look at it to see if it was necessary.
I think we, it has to be with a no.
I think it has to be.
I think we decided that it needs to be done every?
Yeah, so pretty sure.
Right.
So we do need a warrant article so that we can defeat it.
Yeah, and then somebody would have to speak to it so that people understand why.
Why this year we don't want to do it.
Exactly.
We intended to do that, so there's no problem.
Good. Anything else from you investors?
We investors? No.
You leaders, leaders of the investments. Thank you. And business item two. The fire department has requested to put authorization to put the Jeep, which is not used by the department, out to give.
John could not be here tonight. He would like to be here for the conversation, so he asked that you table it until the next meeting.
Motion to table? Second. On paper. It is tabled. Business item three, discussing options for assessing going forward. We have in front of us several suggestions for options, not limited to whatever else might be suggested. Employ and including employing a certified main assessor as an assessing agent, employing a non-certified assessing agent, contracting with a, contracting with a certified main assessor, employing or contracting with a single assessor consulting with an assessing firm. So there would be a difference between contract and consulting and the scope of it. So there's also a potential RFP.
The RFP is the legal services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those were just some ideas off the top of my head to get you thinking about what direction you might want to go in. I would suggest getting some thought to the authority and credentials that you would want this person to have, what duties you would expect them to fulfill, the schedule that you would want them to adhere to, and whether or not you want to continue or if you think that the select board should continue to serve as the board assessors. Because you could ask the legislative body to change to a single assessor if you thought that that would be a better option for the town. So do we want an employee? Do we want a contractor? There's a lot of options.
There's a?
So I thought if you could sort of narrow down what your expectations would be, that that could be really helpful.
Yes. My thought was it would probably be useful in view of the fact that we have a 6:30 deadline. If we take those suggestions, mulled them over, talk to people, come back, put some ideas together.
So, um, so at this point, we've decided to move forward with an assessing agent that appears to be accurate.
That was never voted on.
Well, we should probably start with that then. Because we seem to be going back and forth between hiring an assessor, not having an assessor. And as early as July 6th, we've got, it keeps coming up as a topic from the select board. I've got on September 7th, I've got copies, anyone wants any of this information, where we've got several people asking, specifically Ms. Wilson, can I ask, would we be taking the role of the previous assessing agent, expressing concerns that she's heard, heard from the community? So we keep bringing this up. We've got back and actually, let's skip to what's most pertinent. In the December 21st meeting, we had several components requesting information about the tax assessor. And I actually went to recording. And from public comment first, Mr. Winter at 1:18 minutes, Mr. Winter suggested hiring the assessing agent at that meeting. At, following that 1:19 minutes, Ms. Weir's asked for the town administrator to pursue the hiring of an assessor. And then Mr. David Hadacy at 1:22 minutes and 48 seconds proposed hiring assessing an agent and then asked for formal action on that topic. At that time, at 1:29 minutes and 10 seconds, the board here approved on hiring assessing agent and asked the administrator to start pursuing that action. And at 1:29 minutes, the select board chair clarifies the topic before the January 4th meeting, in quotes, "A discussion of the creation of a part-time assessing agent." So I'm not sure why we keep going back and forth as to whether it has been recommended or not. I have, I think, 12 meetings that was voted on to do this with very folks sitting in this audience this evening also asking to have it done. We did vote on this specifically.
I don't have any recollection of that, do you?
It's on the record.
I mean, that's fine that it's on the record, but I, I don't recall voting on it.
As I'm telling you that specifically in the December 21st minute meeting, at 1:29, 9 minutes and 10 seconds, the board approved an assessing agent.
What was the motion? Was the motion to hire or to look into hiring? To pursue?
To pursue. We keep saying whenever it's discussed hiring one, it has been clearly stated in this particular evening, four people sitting in this audience here requested that to be pursued. And we keep going back to, we've never discussed it. We had it on the record.
No, we did not say that we didn't discuss it.
We have, we. We have not had a motion.
We did motion in this meeting, if you have to go back to the minutes. We had a motion that evening that the three of us approved Christine pursuing.
What was the motion?
I, well, unfortunately, the, the minutes were not specific enough. I have all the timelines of which I went back to and listened specifically to what was discussed at that. And quoted exactly the discussion of the creation of a part-time assessing agent was the motion. So I need to please stop going back and forth in this topic. We have discussed it so, so many times. We need to move forward with this topic. We made a commitment to that. We asked from, we've asked the town administrator to pursue that element.
Okay, then, great. Regardless of what the minutes say, and I hear what you're saying, when people say they want to hire, is the board thinking an employee or a contractor? Because we need to be very clear about what you want.
Okay, so regardless of what that is, we asked you at that moment, as the town administrator, to pursue what that would look like. And I feel free to go back and listen to it and answer it.
I can't decide what it's going to look like. The three of you should decide what the position is.
We asked you, so fortunately, and the timing couldn't have been even better. We have a proposal, an RFP from the town of Westport, looking for an assessing agent. So we already have their RFP information. It's actually, it's just published. Here's one from you Carly for the record. But it gives you all of the criteria, there's one from Madeline also, on what an assessing agent should look like. I'm thinking perhaps a collaborative approach with the town of Westport, who's a very similar community to who we are, where we can make sure that the residents of our communities are addressed. Not having an assessing agent during a time of reval, I think, was a significant problem that we unfortunately didn't see coming. But we, we did very specifically address this all year, but most specifically in the December 21st meeting. And I'm happy to give you all of the notes that I highlighted.
I don't need any notes. I hear what you're saying. But I still have.
And I, I need, we need to know, we need to decide whether we want an employee or a contract or consulting person, however we want to do that. Because we don't, we haven't decided what manner of contract we want.
But this topic keeps showing up on the agenda and not being addressed.
Well, here it is.
Again. But it's not being addressed. We think, do we want this contractor or we want this?
We, before, before we seek a person or persons to do the job, we need to know if we are doing an employment or if we are having a contract.
But if a motion was taken in this November 21st, or the December 21st meeting and we didn't, and it was voted on and then not acted upon, I have a concern that we're not.
To pursue. What does pursuing?
Have you pursued it?
Pursue how? The board has not given me any direction as to what you want.
We do not need to discuss what's happened in the past until we have an executive session. Let's talk about what we want to have happen going forward.
We have a great RFP to take a look at, who's already set the boundaries for us to consider. Very similar environment to where we are, and I think we've got a great starting point here.
Well, I.
You have a couple of questions.
Excuse me. The, the board, according to the policy we adopted a couple of months ago, the board finishes discussion before we have comments from the public. So that is the way we're going to proceed. I see your hand, Justin, and we'll call on you when we have finished our discussion. So let's.
So I, I did like this, but again Suzanne, I think it needs to be tightened up a little bit. Are we looking for an employee or a?
Absolutely. But how long is it gonna take? And I, and I don't want to harp on this Kathy, but how long is it gonna take for us to keep coming back to this topic and not bring a resolution to it?
Well, I think we need to say we're gonna do it by section, section, do it.
We did, we actually had a motion.
I know, but we don't have.
I have the minutes right here.
This is great.
They're all right here also.
Except that it's not.
It's not the literal motion was.
Can you read?
Excuse me, Justin, I'm sorry, but we need to finish this discussion. We will entertain your comment when we are finished with our discussion.
To your actual discussion.
I'm welcome to hear now the content that helps us through this office.
No, we're, we are, we are going to go by our own process. Kathy was in, was in the middle of saying what her concerns are and this is a meeting of the board. So Kathy, would you please finish your?
I was just thinking, this is some great work. I agree that we do need some kind of assessment services for the town. My question is, before we go put out any RFP, we need to know what we are asking for. Are we asking for a town employee? Are we asking for a contractor? What are we asking for?
Yeah, because I couldn't just go out and say, you know, make an assumption of what the board wanted. The board needs to tell me what you want. And then I would put together an RFP and provide it to the board for review before we actually pursue, which is, I think, the word that was used. So hiring of an assessing agent. I need more information.
So do we want, do we want a contractor or an employee?
I think maybe having a conversation with Westport Island, you know, perhaps a collaborative approach. I don't think, I, we don't need a full-time employee. I don't believe they probably do either. I don't want to speak on their behalf, I haven't spoken to anyone over there. But if there's a way for us to both achieve the same goal, this may be an opportunity for us to answer two community questions. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I just, I'm exceptionally frustrated that we've had this stand so many times and can't seem to get to the endpoint.
So my question would be, and this is just my thoughts on what both of you are thinking. Are we looking for a employee? Are we looking for a contract? How many days a week? What are people thinking?
I, you know, and maybe a conversation with these guys would help. I, I'm thinking, I don't think anything more than, you know, we did well, I think, with the schedule we had in the past, which was two days a week. And it is that, let's talk with those, but what was their plan? Does this help them get someone that we can, if they don't want a full-time and we don't, and we make it a full-time position, we probably have a better interested party pool to pull from, in theory. And so I don't, you know, again, we're not gonna decide it right now clearly, but I think we need to figure out, you know, take a look at Westport, see what the, see what the conversation would be with them. I'm thinking somewhere around two days a week. I don't know if that's an employee or a contract. I don't know really what the difference of that falls into, like Kathy, but I think we need to find resolution.
I think that since this is an RFP requesting services, I take that to mean a contract rather than an employee, just as an FYI. If you're hiring somebody.
Performing services.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be issued as an RFP.
They're calling it an assessor's agent position.
If we're employing somebody. And I really, I mean, I gotta keep harping on that point because I want the board to be clear whether you want a contractor or an employee of the town.
The duty shall be performed by an independent contractor and not as an employee of the town at Westport Island. There we have it.
Except, once again, we have something that's given to us in the middle of a meeting, no opportunity to look at it.
It was on the agenda.
This was not.
This was not.
This topic was.
The topic was. And I can't read in 20 minutes or five, in the time that we have to do this meeting. I can't read, digest, figure out whether or not this is going to work for us.
Well, I don't think we can figure it out tonight anyways because somebody's gonna need to talk to Westport.
Right, and, and, well, we know, it says it's a contract, a contract and not an employee. So that answers half our questions.
It doesn't have to be Westport, it could be another town.
Absolutely, but it's a great starting point to, to hear what they're thinking. And, and at least we have some of the criteria for our groundwork. You know, there's some great ideas here.
So how would we move forward and what are timelines we could put in place?
So I would like Christine to reach out, certainly to Westport, and hear what their thoughts are. You know, and I'm thinking we don't need anything more than two days a week. And.
We probably should get all the information before we say two days a week.
Sure. But it's.
Westport Island, is there anybody else that maybe she should, is there any other town?
To be frankly honest, I didn't have time.
Many other towns have contractors.
I came back mid last night from Houston, so I can't feel myself.
I could, but.
Are we offering a contract?
What information am I asking for?
We need to know. Specifically, we need to decide whether we want a contractor or an employee.
I don't think we want an employee. I don't want to play the benefits. I think there, I don't think we have it. We, we need to be fiscally responsible and I think a contract is, is a good starting point for us. If it works out and we want to hire the method employee down the road, terrific. But we, we need to not make a long-term commitment of employment without really seeing how it rolls forward for us.
And I think what I'm hearing is say if we can share with another town, it might be cost effective.
Well, you, and if we, if we end up with a full-time position, timeline, I think your, your pool of candidates is a better opportunity for us. You know, Christine's always said that it's hard to find an assessing agent. If we collaborate, we may get a better pool of candidates that's willing to take on two days here or three days there, or whatever that formula happens to be. I think it's a great option for us to consider.
And what is your, what is your? What is your suggestion if Westport or somebody, whoever, how long are we gonna wait?
Well, theirs is due, I mean, they're, they're expecting this to close May 6th at 6:00 PM. So we probably need to reach out to them tomorrow to really find out what their schedule is. And, and, you know, and if they're interested and they want to pause and extend this, they can choose to do that. We, right now, truthfully, this is, this just happened to come to my knowledge and I, I don't know what else is available, but it's a good starting point.
It is, except it's not, it's a request for proposal and there isn't enough detail.
It's an RFP in any number of CNAs because of by the position.
Right.
You know, it's not.
No, they actually have to have a license on here. I did read that. They're looking for these people to hold.
A CNA.
Of course we are.
It says what the job is, but it doesn't say timeframes or.
Right, it doesn't indicate how many hours we expect them to be in the office. Do we expect evening office hours, for instance? Which I would like to see.
And the person who submits the successful proposal might already work for, for other towns. You know, it could be anybody.
It could be anybody, but I, I feel like we're finding excuses for not finding someone right now versus finding excuses to look for somebody right now. And I think we need to find a candidate or a solution so that we don't have this conversation for another six months.
We need to decide what it is we want for our town. And that is more than.
So that sits with us. So what's the timeframe for us to have all our recommendations in and get Christine to put this up?
So I'd like Christine to reach out to these guys.
And ask them what.
Just say, what do you, what type of candidate are you looking for? Is it full-time? What are your thoughts? You know, you, I mean, it is not on here, you know, would you contemplate sharing a candidate with another town if it made sense? You know, because I, I believe finding someone that, that in theory has a full-time position more and more apt to get a better candidate for that, if at all possible.
You just want to do this one or?
No, she can search other, I mean, this happens, we know they're looking.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else that you have to do, Marla?
I have many, many things that I need to do.
And this wasn't on my topic.
It would actually probably be a good idea so that the, that you get the answers that you're looking for, that the board designates somebody to call towns. Because I really do not have the time to take this on right now. And if I come back with answers that you're not happy with, then it was a waste of time.
As a person who has very limited employment, I would be happy to get in touch with whomever at Westport and whoever else may be at the local. Justin, do you know people who are looking for contract work?
I'm allowed to speak now?
Yes, please.
I do not know of any particular individuals that are actively seeking employment as a certified main assessor at the moment.
Okay. Mike?
Are we opening for comments or?
Have you, have we reached a place where we're ready?
Well, I think we need some input from the audience too.
Yep, who was first on the, I think they were behind you, maybe.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I just had an answer to Justin's thing, that's all.
The Steve Sullivan's advice was most towns do it as a contract.
Yes.
Rather than as an employee. There's a lot of sound reasons that, that is true. I would highly recommend it as a contract. At one time, people were, when we were looking for CMAs, they were giving up to two years to, or 18 months to get your CMA. That faded away and it wasn't necessary. It's necessary again. There's RFPs out all the time as samples. People looking for second thirds, both as employees as, and as, as contractors. Buckfield advertised in December, sent us a letter requesting services. We did not respond. And as far as I know, it is in March, they were still looking. They had a deadline of replying before Christmas, so that is the idea.
Hi. I believe last summer when we were talking about this before, Juanita was here, and she mentioned that the state of Maine has a listing on their website of actual certified CMAs. So that would be a great place to start, you know, they're certified without sending out any sort of advertisements.
It's a list of 29.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, that's the number I can remember. So there's a list there, so there's plenty of opportunities.
Justin, you have another comment?
I'd like to follow on with the, the public comment that I think it should be a contract, not a direct employee. We've had issues in the past where someone would not walk performing in the position. It's more complicated as a direct employee than if it's a contract that is only for a year or two, that if you're not satisfied with the performance or the direction it's going, it's easier to simply not do that contract and instead go into RFP or a different agent.
Right.
Can I ask?
100% you need to have a certified main assessor doing the job. I heard that one of the options presented to you earlier tonight was to have a non-certified person doing the work. Do not do that. 100%. As a taxpayer, vote against that budget line all day long.
What would be some incentives or some perks, like to get him somewhere maybe another town could get?
Money.
Is that not money?
Bear in mind, you are asking any potential respondent to an RFP at this point to walk into another circus of an assessment with tax maps that haven't been updated since 2016.
And I, I did some looking a couple of months ago about pay scales. It was on a national basis, not local. Can you give me a ballpark?
I would suggest you call that Maine Municipal Association for their salary survey, assessing services upon.
And I did that, I provided that to you when I gave you.
Right.
A pile of information a while back.
Given the challenges that any potential person would be responding to, I would suggest you don't go on the low side, or you will not need a respondent.
Right, right. I'm also presuming that the 29 assessors talked to each other?
Oh, yeah.
Most likely. So, so the situation would be dealt with among the people who might be interested.
I mean, if, if for things that you want to make it attractive, money's maybe not the only thing. Flexible hours, you may want to stipulate the number of days a month that you want someone in office, but maybe you allow them to be flexible on some weeks it's Monday and some weeks it's Thursday. That may be more attractive to some respondents than others. So some flexibility in responses might be attractive and open up your pool a little bit.
Yeah.
But you could certainly specify that at a minimum you should be in X number of days. Because I think the residents of this community deserve, you know, someone they can sit with face-to-face to discuss their issues and have their questions answered, not someone simply forwarding an email to the town office, to whatever person is taking those emails, and then trying to pass it on to another party that is not even physically in the building. There are simply some things that you have to be at a face-to-face conversation to get both sides of the perspective to actually come to a resolution that's equitable.
Would you recommend, would, would you think about half-days, full-days? How, how would you suggest those?
You know, I suggest that you be flexible on that.
Well, I mean, that can be different from one to the next.
So we can just say how many hours a week we need and let them pick.
Flexible schedule possibilities.
Yes.
And go from there with what you get from the responses.
Yep. Well, so, since I've done a significant amount of research, I'm happy to take on the Westport RFP and chat with them and see what their schedule is. Now, if you want to go ahead and take on the state.
Well, I'm happy to take on the state.
Enjoy that.
Well, the state would be happy to take on me, fast question.
Christine, do you have something else that you were going to add?
I will inquire.
You asked what the actual motion was, so I had looked up the actual minutes that were posted on the webpage.
Can you share that?
I can, it's probably moved at this point. Actually, here. Municipal Officer Hennessy moved, seconded by Municipal Officer LaValle, to authorize the town administrator to begin inquiries into a part-time assessing position.
Okay, so.
And that, that date was?
To me, that's vague, and I had no idea what that would mean.
That was the December 21st.
There was probably a lot more to that conversation.
I'm sorry, December 21st, 2023.
And I have all the timelines, if you need the further dialogue for the other four people.
And that's fine, everyone, but we're going to walk away from this meeting tonight, and we still don't have details of who's going to do what by when, and we're going to be sitting here again in July having the same discussion. So when are we going to have this information back to be discussed?
How about if the next select board meeting on the 18th, one week from today? That would give us plenty of time. If we're going to engage with Westport, we still have time to do so. I'm trying to.
We should start saying Westport if you say we're going to engage.
Well, if we're going to try and work with them, their timeline is May 6th, so it's.
I don't.
We don't want to pin it down, Marla.
If we're trying to, if we're trying to cast a wide net, we need not to, I think we.
Let's shoot for next, let's all plan on having that on the next budget, the next agenda item to get our research prepared for that November of today.
Mike, you have a comment?
To get one and keep one, you need to do the hard part of getting the data that has not been provided. And if that requires lawyer's action, luckily that's going to be a necessity. I think somebody else who wants to walk into the town that wasn't really all that clear what they had, although, sitting beside me, you need to get really bad base, so you're not going to beat somebody.
Okay.
Is there anyone that you guys would like me to call or? Is there any town that? I can just call a couple of towns and see what they're doing.
And I'll talk to Steve.
Could be a thought, Mike, that we.
In addition to the ones that are listed as agents on the state webpage, if you really have a very limited pool of responses, the state also maintains a list of contacts for all certified main assessors in the state as part of their maintenance of our education on an annual basis. That list is not necessarily posted anywhere, but if you ask for it, they may give it to you, at which point you could potentially send your RFP out to, I mean, you're probably talking three or 400 certified main assessors at that point of the active designations. But if you really have a drought of responses, that might be an avenue for more people to reach out to.
Do you think that by the 18th, we could have our recommendations for how many hours and so that we could be ready to go with the proposal?
Certainly, as you're going to talk to some other towns, ask them what they're doing. You know, that'll give us an idea of, of what they need, how, how, do they feel it's enough with what they have? Would they, you know, and I'll do the same. I think they're in a very different.
We've got to see. We'll go with you, Mr. Trump?
Yeah, just a quick recommendation. I looked up the population of Westport on the computer, and it's 710 people. So there, actually, our needs probably be a lot greater than theirs, but that's just a point of information.
Yeah, and Mike, and then Justin, what?
Well, Justin first, because I lost it. Sorry, man.
As a follow-up for the difference in needs, I suspect that Westport is probably not looking for an agent to come up and clean up a situation that was not well administered.
Right.
Frankly, that is the situation we are in now. We have a project that was, in my opinion, an embarrassment to the profession. It was not well administered. There's very important information to walk into, and it's delicate. You're going to get a partnership from anybody that wants to take on Westport and us. We are in a unique project at this point as the results of what has happened. I think you need to keep that in consideration as you're preparing for who you're looking for for candidates. And frankly, as Michael alluded to, as someone who has walked into a mess without giving that, even that kind of heads up, when you are screening potential candidates and discussing potential people, you should be very forthcoming with what kind of situation they're coming into, or you are going to lose them very, very quickly.
Right.
Do not blindside an assessor planning for this situation, or you will not be happy with the results you get.
Having been blindsided in a previous position, I fully can. So are we caught up? Can you, can you hold on just a minute?
You don't, you don't want to specify the number of days. What you, you want is a time walk that is, is public hours and a separate time that is.
Right.
Working hours. Working hours. We go in college on Saturdays and Sundays because we can get something done.
Right, without people coming in to check. So, so, so flexible hours, adequate compensation, public, in the RFP, a specification for both a face time with the public and, and working hours away from the public. Set in a nicer way than that. Because it sounds like we don't like the public. And of course we do, because we are Republican. So.
Production hours.
Production hours, what a nice name.
And I want the results we got before. You may also want to specify they will actually do fieldwork.
The RFP that we have here calls for that as well.
All the way around the house.
So would that, two things a week?
Would everything that we get going be appropriate? Or would we want, I mean, hours-wise or do we?
Well, I mean, if you say production hours, I think that gives them the opportunity, do they want to do two, you know, office days and one, like, you know, on the weekend where they can focus on.
I know, but if we put down hours and we only give them 60 now, if that's, do they actually do 24 hours?
Or we say 20 hours, production hours. I mean, that's not set to, you know, a particular.
We have 15 minutes, don't we?
I think, I think you probably have this in two phases. First, you have cleaning the mess up, which is probably as many hours as it's going to take. And then after that, you've got the maintenance part of the normal day-to-day after everything is straightened out to work. So you may want to structure it a little bit differently to.
Actually need to see what they got and just determine itself what.
Right, right, and, and maybe it's not necessarily real specific in an, in an RFP, but when you sit down and talk to them, say, you know, we've got this situation, and this is what we have, and, you know, we need you to take a look at it and figure out how many hours a week you think it's going to take to get this squared away in the next two months, three months, or whatever, give them a timeframe. And then after that, two or three months is over, then it's just the regular maintenance day-to-day that you're looking for. So I think you've got a two-tiered sort of request with this person, you know, which is.
So I have a question that kind of adds to that. So we, back in November, we, we had the town administrator clarify that the additional $20,000 budget is for spring pickup work. Is it our associated revaluation process for departmental? Appraisals have been paid in full, any additional meetings, hell, in conjunction to revale are including the cost of revale. So is that $20,000, has that been committed? If not, can't we use that for this? I mean, we, as a starting point.
They've already done pickup work, so there will be an invoice for pickup work. There will also be an invoice.
What pickup work have they done?
They, they followed up on the building permits. They've started pickup work, spring pickup work.
Before we did the abatements?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Well, I think it's important to do the abatements first.
Well, they do it as close to April 1st as possible.
So have you received an invoice yet?
The process needs to move forward, so we, they started pickup work.
Have you received an invoice yet?
We have not received an invoice yet.
Okay, we have, we have more, we have a very short time. So be clear on when we're going to do the next conversation.
Next meeting.
The 18th.
Now, might, to expect anything we want to include in the packet, or will it all be unveiled at the meeting? Just discussed at the meeting?
Yeah.
Because I kind of need to know what to expect.
I think we come back with our findings and then we put together something solid as part of the meeting. Okay. Because I would see how, I mean, you can't meet again without having the meeting. And so I think it's.
Certainly, at the end of the meeting on the 18th, we'd have a very definite plan in place.
Okay, and let's take a quick look at, or maybe a moment, at the request for proposals for legal services.
I put this together based on Farmington's RFP for legal services. I thought it was well-written. Some of the language is the truth. And I would recommend you take some time to look at it and make sure it fits with what you're looking for in town council.
So if, can we take a look at that on the 18th? Because I would like to get that one. Sam is talking with us, and is deciding, assuming. I'm going to get that out as soon as possible. So can we promise to take a look at this, come up with any suggestions for changes that we would potentially make?
Yeah, okay.
Be ready for that meeting?
Okay, good.
Town administrator, please. I have no report tonight. All right. We don't have an item on here for future agenda items, but we often do. I'd like to discuss the policy. Does it have to be next meeting about, or procedure for select board comments on minutes? Or changes to minutes? And how those will be handled? I suggest we just do it from a, from that video. That's not only agenda tonight, so we'll discuss that either at next meeting or the first meeting in Maine. So do we have comments, announcements?
I'd like us to also revisit the policy that. I'd like us to also revisit the policy that, um, only the chair of the select board can communicate with our town attorney. I think any select board member should be able to communicate with our town attorney, because we all have very different opinions on what is important for that.
That policy is in place because our current attorney has made it clear that that's the way that they would want to proceed.
Well, see, our current attorney's leading it a month, so now's the time to talk about that.
Well, since the RFP will be on the agenda next time, that's a pretty good time to talk about it.
Right. 'Cause if any one of us feels a really significant need, we should not be precluded to pursuing, um, resolution. That ends up in a very delicate decision of ex parte communication, so it's actually not ex parte.
I believe that that was not the, um, I didn't have any other information on that. Um, so, any further comments, do you have any? All right, public comment?
Um, I guess I'm really very shocked that you were using Parker appraisal to continue on with any sort of work for the town after the horrendous mess that they have created. Um, and I guess I'm incredibly disturbed that Christine mentions it and the three of you appear to not even know that was happening. So I guess I'd like to know-
Mention it to the chair, at least.
Have, have the board of selectmen approved Parker appraisal to continue to work for the town after the mess that they had created?
No, actually, I haven't.
The board gave me authority to move forward with the process through commitment, and that was an actual motion.
Yes, and it was accepted.
Yes, and it was accepted. And the idea that they created a mess is an opinion, it is not fact.
It's an opinion of a lot of people in town.
Well, I've only really heard from, we, maybe ten people who feel that way.
We don't need to discuss whether that's fact or not. We have given the authority to Christine and to, to carry out the process that was described at length in the previous meeting, and, um, that's the only way to get through it. We've got to get through it.
Could you please elaborate, elaborate on the process that you're talking about, 'cause that wasn't at the meeting?
It is in the minutes of whatever meeting we discussed it at.
So you're refusing to tell me what you've authorized them to do?
Well, it's in writing, it's two pages long.
So you're refusing to tell me what you've authorized Parker appraisal to do?
It's a long document, and we have five minutes. We are not refusing. If you want that, you can call the office in the morning and get it verbatim all done. I don't know the details off the top of my head.
You don't know the details, but you approved it?
I knew the details at the time, it was a while ago, and I'm sorry, I don't have recall at this moment of all of the details. I do know that that's what we did.
It was a written statement that was approved by the board.
So they're moving forward, doing the updates based on building permits?
Yes, that was part of it.
Justin?
So, since you've only heard from a few residents with that opinion, I will express that opinion as one of your taxpayers. I would personally not have the numbers simple to any, to Parker appraisal or any additional work in this community. Second, it may be your policy, and it may be a good tool for when there are people being unruly, that it's only the board that's allowed to discuss during a meeting until you open it up to comments. However, when a civil comment is being presented as one of your residents, I would suggest that maybe make some flexibility for that, if the person's not being unruly or disruptive. Third, when you stated that it's the board's meeting, you are my elected representative, you are my board, it is the people's meeting, not the board's meeting, I love it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mike?
I would like to verify that while Parker appraisal is running around this town again, that they actually have provided workers' compensation, auto insurance, and insurance, unlike they ran around the town all last year. It is not true that a corporation provides insurance to the state so that therefore the town does not have to receive it. So I want to hear that we are actually complying with procurement policy this year.
Justin?
Proof of insurance should be on file. If they're out doing field work and they get a child, or they run over a pet, or they crash into my car, I want them to be able to pay the insurance on that, not the town board in that way.
It's in their contract they're supposed to have, and so we should be able to request it.
Has it been provided?
I don't believe so, but we can certainly request it.
Steve?
I asked this question at the last board meeting, Kathleen wasn't there. Kathleen, what do you think of the job that Parker appraisal did in the revaluation of the town of Westbatt?
I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that we need answers to, and that's why I am willing to sit through the abatement process and hope to get some of those answers for all of us.
I hope we get a lot of answers from them, in particular, remind the board and the town administrator of my two questions I asked at the February, around fifteenth meeting, which, the answers to which will be very illuminating as to the quality of the work that Parker appraisal did for the town of Westbatt.
And I think one of the things, Steve, that you said, and that I feel like too, is, is a lot of unanswered questions, but we kinda got ourselves painted in a corner. We need to get through this process in order to be able to move on to any other process.
I agree, and as a, when there is a moment, as a moment of reflection, I would like the board to consider how they got jammed into that place and not end up in that situation again, and not to rely as easily on recommendations as they have in the past.
And I'd like maybe to add a policy to, um, any future bills from Parker, that we maybe hold over on them to make sure all of our commitments have been met, that include the revaluation, um, papers and everything else that we've not yet received to be included before final payment is made.
Do you have an agenda item?
Yes, that should be an agenda item.
Steve, would you mind sending me your questions? I'm sorry, again, so that I have them on Wednesday.
I will send them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Send them to all of us, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more comment? Entertaining, any motion to adjourn?
A whole minute, we have a question. Oh, sorry.
I appreciate civilized conversation, Steve.
Thank you. I second it?
I'll pay it.
See, you do that more than I do. So, so, I'll pay it for you.